Call in North Bramford Town Council Meeting to water for Tuesday, May 17th, 2016, at 7:08 PM. Start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Doody.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Armin.
Here.
Councilor Candelaure.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Manna.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Rose.
Here.
Motion to approve the April 6, 2016 revised special town council meeting budget deliberations.
Move.
Second.
Any corrections?
No, the corrections have now been made.
Roll call.
Mayor Doody.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Armin.
Yes.
Councilor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Motion to approve the town council meeting minutes for May 3rd, 2016.
So move. Second.
Corrections. Roll call.
Mayor Doody.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Armin.
Yes.
Councilor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Move into the regular town council meeting. First item is reports of committees, boards, and commissions, permanent project building committee.
Permanent project met last week. Main topic of discussion was the release of the final payment to Titan for the TBS roof project. And there were some issues with some of the exhaust fans not being hooked up or operating properly, which was Titan's responsibility. And Titan authorized another company that the Board of Ed could seek another electrical company to come in and hook those up for them and backcharge them. And the permanent project voted to table the release of the final payment to them until that work has all been done. And tonight at our communication committee meeting, the superintendent of schools did tell us that that project, that part of the project has been completed. They are all operational at this time and they were able to use. Originally, they thought that the wrong units had been ordered and that they weren't wired properly for what was there, but they were able to use them and hook them up properly. And John Florio was there with them and okayed everything that has been done. So that part of the project has been done. And he, the superintendent, also gave us an update on the projects, the roof projects for the high school. There were some issues with the change orders not being submitted correctly on those. That has been done and is moving forward for review. So we should be getting something in the next couple of weeks about any ineligible cost on that and going through the whole process as we do with any other building project. And the TBS project, roof project, is under review and they should be hearing something within the next couple of weeks in regards to that. And that was it.
Economic Development Commission.
They did not meet. Their next meeting is June 6th. However, I do want to point out there is a economic development forum that UI is hosting for Thursday. I will be attending. I'm not sure, I don't believe there are any other members from the EDC, but I will be attending on their behalf for that. And I believe there is a, the Shoreline Chamber has got an event later this month. Shoreline Chamber of Commerce has an event for the 25th, I believe.
Thank you. Next is Park and Recreation.
Park and Rec hasn't had a meeting since our last meeting. They meet next on the 24th.
Thank you. Police Commission.
Police Commission did not meet in May. The next meeting is June 13th.
Fire Commission, Fire Commission met. One highlight that came out was Lieutenant Torino informed the board that Company 3 will be partnering with Park and Rec to fundraise the Cow Chip Raffle. The chief gave his reports. And they have a lot of activity going on there. And they also talked about, the Fire Commission is in charge of, if they ever centralized locations down near the police department, if they ever build a facility, they would be interested in moving the ambulance down there. And that was about it. Board of Education, Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
We met tonight just prior to this meeting. Our first topic of discussion was the state budget cuts and, which is later on in our budget, but I am happy to report, I did go to their workshop that they had between the Board of Ed and the administrators. The Board had to come up with approximately $1.1 million in cuts from our original cut to their budget. And as I told the superintendent at our communication committee meeting, I just want to commend the administrators and the Board for what they have done. They did a lot of out-of-the-box thinking for their cuts. It's not just all teachers. They have looked at a number of areas across the Board and basically, almost all departments will have some type of an effect with their cuts. They actually did a very good job in their presentation. I sat through their whole presentation at their workshop. The Board has not accepted them all yet. They're all just proposed budget cuts at this point because they are waiting until we accept our budget. And if that is done tonight, then they will take action on Thursday night based on the proposals that they did. We also talked about building projects. He brought us up to date on, you know, the roof projects and where they stand with the state. Both Kim Newbig from the Board of Ed's office and Michelle Knackwood have, went to a suppos today in regards to the project, building projects going forward, what's on the books, which seemed to be very effective. And then we also talked about the auditorium. There's some expenses at the auditorium. The carpet needs to be replaced at the auditorium. And they're looking to do that with the rental money from this year, the excess rental money, the net effect of that. They do have some cost estimates and I think I saw Don, you're done. Was that a state contract?
Yes.
Okay, because Scott didn't know that. But, so if it's a state contract, the bid, or the bid that they got, they are looking to do that this summer after they're done with the rental on that.
Any possible retirements?
They did have a retirement at the high school level in the science department, which they had to backfill. They did replace that teacher. And there is savings with that even at, you know, because they hired at a lower level, but even though they're on a higher level, but they have unemployment and stuff. So, but they did realize the amount of the savings that they had anticipated on that retirement. They've had a few resignations. Some they're filling, some they are not filling. That's how they're making up part of their, you know, part of their cost.
Did we ever resolve when it comes to rental income from the auditorium, whether that goes to the town side or if it stays on the board side? I don't know if we ever got an answer on that.
I'm not sure that we did, because I know that was sent to the town attorney on that. But that's where we're, to replace the carpet, that's where we will take that money.
Right.
To put it back into the auditorium on theirs, to use that money.
Okay.
And our next meeting is scheduled for August 9th, just before the council meeting.
Thank you. Next item is Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
The Town Planning Goals Subcommittee met on May 11th. I think we're at a point now with our needs assessment and our planning where we would like to, as a committee, ask the town council if we could have a special meeting in June. It would be a discussion meeting and we'd ask it to be executive session because it would be a matter of public safety. And we would include, it would be the planning committee with the town council and folks from the DTC, the people that have done the needs assessment for the building. I'm throwing that out as a possibility and if we could do it on the off week, possibly June, I'm sorry, June 14th or 15th. Again, it would have to be a special meeting, executive session. People could look at their calendars, is that a possibility, one of those two dates?
Why would it be an executive session?
Because it's a matter of public safety. We checked, I checked that with the town manager.
I think safety and security.
Safety and security.
Fall under personnel negotiation.
(laughing). I'm listing off everything there is.
Well, there's, there's only, there's only.
Public safety would not be.
There's only, there's only four.
Public safety would not be something that would be executive session.
Well, security is, I think. So if it falls under security.
I'm not sure, you know, normally it's, you know, pending claims and litigation.
Okay, I.
There are four, as.
I mean, go ahead. I mean, maybe, you know.
Well, I certainly defer to Pat, but yeah, security is one of the four or five categories beyond personnel matters, beyond negotiations and so forth.
So security is one thing. Public safety is not security. So is it public safety or is it security?
I guess it's a little bit of both. Most, probably more public safety than security.
Okay.
So I could be wrong then in terms of executive session.
Can we get us Pat?
Well, let's see what the attorney says.
But is it, could we possibly pick the date tonight? 14th or 15th, which seems to be the better.
Yeah, either one.
14th Tuesday.
I'm good on either one.
14th, okay. All right, we'll go with the 14th. Flag day, I'll draw the flag, we're all. Thank you.
Next is the Public Safety Communications Committee.
Public Safety Communications Committee had a very interesting meeting last week. We met with the First Selectmen, Jamie Cosgrove from Bramford, along with the police chief, Kevin Holleran. We had a lengthy discussion, I'd say it was over an hour, about the possibility of combining our resources to have a regional dispatch center. I think the possibility of working with Bramford probably is a lot, going to be a lot easier for us than perhaps looking at that situation of having the Wallingford, Cheshire, North Haven. We already do a few things with North Bram, with Bramford. You know, we do the, we have the animal control, we have the water treatment plant. So there are a lot, we already have a lot of cooperation going. They were, they were very interested in working with us. We kind of, we meet all the thresholds in terms of requirements, in terms of the population, and in terms of the number of calls that we get. We, there are a lot of things to do. I mean, it's not an easy procedure. It's going to take a long time. One of the suggestions was that we form a steering committee with a few members from each, from each town. But I think it's a very, very positive step. And I, and the First Selectmen of Bramford is going to kind of look at the next part of that, which is the dispatchers and, and union issues in terms of the dispatchers. So I think, you know, we're going to continue the conversation. I think some of the folks in North Bramford would like to go to Bramford and see their updated, I forget how much they spent, was it six million or something, on the dispatch center? In addition to that, the committee also has a recommendation for the town council. So I would like to make a motion to add, under unfinished business, 8E North Bramford Telecommunications Dispatch Center. It's a recommendation from the Public Safety Communications Committee.
So I second that, modifying the agenda. Second that motion.
One favor, or roll call, I should say.
Mayor Doody.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Armin.
Yes.
Councilor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Manna.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is Planning and Zoning Commission.
Next meeting for Planning and Zoning is May 19th. And they're still talking and working on the accessory dwellings regulation.
Thank you. Next is Town Managers' Report, Regional Dispatch Update.
Yes, we did have a meeting this week to talk about the first option, which is the option with Wallingford. And I'm going to hand out just some of the work that we've been gathering for that meeting. The group, as I may have mentioned, the group gave a subgroup of finance directors from the four towns a task of looking at trying to create apples-to-apples in terms of operating costs of each of the four towns that we're talking about, Cheshire, North Haven, Wallingford, and us. So what I'm handing around is sort of, this is actually, Anthony had put together, working with the finance directors about what the operational cost is. So the, the option one with Wallingford is a multi-town, four-town, it's very complex. And this is just one of the issues. If you start at the top and think about first and foremost, the structure of the organization, the model that you're going to use. We have not resolved that issue at, at this point. So that's, that's ongoing and very complex and will take some more time. But then you get into the actual, you know, operation, what we think could bring to the table. So in addition to what each town spends on their centers, there is, or there would be, could be, funding from the state for this region if that funding is, stays intact. That could bring almost $400,000 to the equation. Plus, there's a one-time $250,000 capital, if you will, capital infusion for capital infrastructure or development. But again, that's down the road. We're not sure if that money's going to hold through. We would hope it does. And then there's some issues of platforms. So if you can imagine, four separate towns, not all in the same, but actually, just actually two separate. So I think two of us are on Next Gen and two of us are on what's called New World and now bought up by Tyler, but they're, they're separate systems. So there's a lot of, and also radio communications in terms of Motorola versus Kenwood. So there are a lot of issues that have to be worked out. And in addition to the first step that was made with the architect, the architect is scheduled to deliver a report in four weeks on site selection. He's working on the criteria for the two properties. I forget, one was, I think Kick Hill. I don't have those. But they're looking at evaluating the two sites there. So it's still very much a work in progress and gathering information with a subsequent meeting, next meeting about diving deeper into the telecommunications software platform issue. So that's what I can report at this point. Much more complex option, I think, at this point than it would be going to a, to a Bramford. But that, you know, remains to be seen.
Thank you.
Point of interest here, guys, just look at the, look at the tops, top-scale hourly rate. Good old North Bramford.
I know.
We pay the most.
I know.
Cheshire, North Haven, and Wallingford. Those three towns aren't as affluent as we are, so we can pay more.
Computer tablets for town council?
Yeah, this is an item the council raised at, at the last meeting, and I think it is, you know, merits review. So Anthony and I, you know, talking about it, Anthony's trying to gather information. But one of the questions that we sat down and came up was, you know, in terms of trying to cost these things out, is really the features. How many bells and whistles do you want? And Anthony brought up the fact that, you know, he'd like to have, and maybe you agree, you want that writing feature, be able to write notes in the margins or, you know, like a Surface tablet that you get, you know, I'm not sure how far, how advanced you want to get or what bells and whistles you want, but that, we're looking for some feedback to, you know, get into the, into the evaluation of what, not that it matters too much, but maybe, you know, another, I don't know, 40, 50 bucks, it drives the price up a little bit. But, you know, we're going to, we're going to shop around and quote and look for whatever we can, but we notice you have some guidance in terms of if you think that, that's an important feature, we'll look for that. We'll tee it up and do a comparison, your basic stripped-down version of a tablet versus some, you know, ability to write in the notes and so forth, writing the margins for notes.
From this side of the table, everybody's got things written in margin and highlighted and this and that and the other thing.
Yeah.
So I think that's kind of essential.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be important.
But you're saying it's only a difference of about $40 per unit?
No, I, I'm just, no, I have no idea. I, my impression is that that feature is going to drive the price up, whether it's another $50, I don't know. And, and it just remains to be seen what kind of deal we can get. Maybe there's something on state bid. Maybe there's some, you know, you know, some way we can, we can get a deal through CROG or one of the other agencies that has already put this out. We should be able to sort of sort through and figure out which brand we want, what features we want.
Whatever it is, it's going to reduce the cost of the paper that we're spending now.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we can, you know, you can look at this as recouping costs in terms of mailing, in terms of paper costs, yeah, over the cycle.
Going to have to recoup an awful lot of money to pay for this one. That's, this is an expensive proposition, is it not?
Well, I, I mean, we're talking, I don't know, Anthony, you have more, more insight in terms of $500 base cost, $400 base cost? I don't know.
Yeah, you're probably talking the $400, $600 range. Again, if you want like a Kindle reader, where you're just reading the document, I agree that, I mean, notes and everything, who, you know, made a motion, seconded a motion, approved any comments you want to write. An iPad, you're using your finger. The Microsoft Surface seems to be a popular one. They, a special pen you have to buy to write on that, that's another 30 or 40 bucks just for the pen, quite honestly. But I think it has some nice features on it, and I was just trying to figure out where you want it to go. I'm an advocate of writing notes on it, and I think that's a crucial piece of it. So the most simple, you know, the e-reader kind of thing really doesn't, doesn't make sense in my mind. So the question, do you want to go with an iPad that maybe you just use your finger to write on, or would you rather have a nice utensil to write on? Lose a chance of risk, of losing it however, which is, you know, always a.
What's life expectancy?
Depends on what you beat on it. Three to five years, I would think. I would say three to five years.
I mean, this, this began when Counselor Rose talked about cutting paper and.
This conversation began probably about six years ago as well, when there was earlier talk and it just kind of fizzled away.
I wasn't part of that earlier one, but a part of this one. And, you know, cutting paper and getting electronic transmission of, of these agenda items makes perfect sense.
Sure.
Putting out a, an expense of $5,000, $6,000 to buy what we need at this point seems a.
It's sizable.
It is sizable. And.
I'll set by the savings and paper and postage.
My, my letter here was $6.80.
Well, I picked mine up, so, you know, I can do that.
So, I mean, I'd spend $6 on gas coming from my house there.
But it definitely is something to look at.
Yeah, we'll get some numbers and get some features and look, have you look at some base, base product.
Might cause any problems with FOI and all that?
It's a great question. I don't know yet. That is something I'd have to research and, and look at. And I don't believe we're cutting new ground here. There's got to be some examples of other towns and policies in place to protect on that.
There's going to be the whole council packet filed at the town clerk's office anyway, so.
Oh, right. You can't get away from that, right? Still have to file that.
It's not going to be, it's not going to be any interference with FOI from there.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, as any other thing, it's just an electronic form that you just can't, again, we can't hold meetings or hold votes electronically and things of that nature. We can send out notices and updates electronically, but I, I don't think it poses a problem if other towns are already doing it. They've probably hammered out any issues that had.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next item is Southwest Conservation District request for use of festival grounds.
Yeah, there's a letter in here for your consideration. I brought it forth because I'm not sure exactly what the policy for the council as to entertaining a request for use of the, of the fields essentially where the Poco Festival holds its, you know, August festival. The Southwest Conservation District is looking for funds, is basically asking if they can hold a, you know, aid concert-type thing where they, they have a two-day, Friday, Saturday. Friday is the, sort of the conservation educational component of what they do and how they help different communities along with fundraising-type concerts, so.
About police and public works?
Yeah, it's a, it brings in a whole host of, of questions and, and from a threshold point, whether or not this council allows that. If there's been a policy of steps, I haven't seen, so I'm looking for guidance as to whether or not we even want to consider this. But they are Conservation District that we, we support and they do some pretty good work around the, around the region.
This is not a request for a rental.
No, this, this, this is yet, they're looking for a free use of, of the field.
Yeah, okay.
In order to do education and fundraiser, sort of combined, like a Farm Aid type thing.
It will cost us.
Oh, well, it'll cost to put on, right, in terms of.
It'll cost somebody, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what they could generate. They've never, I don't think they've ever done it, but they haven't done it here. I don't know what kind of crowds they would generate, what kind of, you know, burden it would be on public works, would be on police, would, you know, those details haven't been worked out. He's just looking to secure, looking to see if there's, if there's.
I'd ask them what they're willing to contribute.
Yeah.
For our police, public works.
It'd be out of their proceeds. They just have to figure out what they're going to have for tenants or if they could figure out what they're going to.
Well, we would just have to.
Depends what they're going to do for tickets.
We would just have to project what the expenses will be and then they'll have to. Wouldn't this fall under park rec too, with land use for park rec?
I don't think that's under.
I read, I read this letter twice and quite frankly, I don't know what they're proposing to do.
Thank you.
So just make, if nothing else, a phone call, just ask what it is they want to do, how they intend to organize it, how many people they anticipate drawing. We really can't respond to a request like this. It's so amorphous. I, I don't know what, what it is they want to do.
He, he is, and I, I agree with you. I think that, I was bringing it forward to say that if you would consider, or if there's just, we do not do this, is, is what I'm looking for, or you would. I could invite him here to the next meeting, explain it, get all the information, whatever. I just wanted to kind of rule out.
Does somebody hang that field at some point during the summer?
No.
Did we ever get a bid in for that hang? This is off topic, but.
That's going to be, that's mowed, that's mowed constantly now, right?
Yeah.
So.
I just, I agree with Joe. We just need more information before we can make.
Okay.
Any type of a decision.
Yeah. I can add him, I can add him, I can talk with him and if you need him here, he can, you can pose any kind of question you want, but I think he's more than willing to.
Something we want to drag somebody from, versus offices in Greenwich, from Greenwich to come here and talk to us. I would just, this, this letter doesn't really tell us what they're doing, other than they want use of our land.
Right.
I really want to know what they're going to do with it, how many people are going to be there, how many cars are going to be parked there, what security measures they intend to, to implement, how they're paying for that. We don't want to be left with a bill. We don't want to be left with damage to the property.
Right.
They got to be properly insured. It raises a whole host of questions that simply not addressed in this letter, other than saying they do good things, so. Yeah, I saw that too.
Okay.
Franklin Roosevelt started it.
I'll find out what I can.
I think it's a good idea. I think that, you know, that you'd have to figure it out so there's no cost to the town, but it's a hundred questions, but other than that, I think it's a good idea. I have a property that just sits there for the potato festival.
No, but let's kick it back.
And this is a, you know, it's a good organization, but at any rate, there are a lot of questions to be answered.
Okay.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that's.
Next item is community events and presentations. Everybody have their invitation to the Memorial Day Parade, which is held in Northford, May 30th, 2016. Line up St. Monica's Church at 9:00 AM. Parade starts promptly at 10:00 AM.
Yeah, Mayor, while we're still under that, I just wanted to put a plug in for senior lunch is going to be happening on Friday at Stanley T. Williams', and the council is invited to that. It's also, May is Senior Appreciation Month for May, so...
What time is it?
Lunchtime noon.
Mr. Mayor, I also have something, but it just came to me. It's a little late. The Connecticut District Exchange Club is honoring two of our police officers, Sergeant Bernardo and Officer Hannan, at the Aquaterc, but it's on Thursday, it's just this Thursday. I only received it a couple of days ago, but just, it's nice that two of our officers are being recognized.
Anything else? Next item, citizens' statements and petitions and correspondence.
It wouldn't be Tuesday.
Town Avenue, Northford, hey. The Potato Fest grounds. If you establish something so early on, how can you say no to any group that wants to come in? Who's going to get stuck? We all know who's going to get stuck managing it. The man that can't do anything more because he's overburdened and understaffed, it's going to fall on him. You have no idea who's going to pay for the police. You're having trouble now getting money for cops on duty, right? This is a good organization, but that kind of venue maybe would do better at the Durham Fairgrounds or the Gelford Fairgrounds, where they have established insurances, established parking, established fields. That is a park. It's not a, it could turn into a Woodstock, for crying out loud. Twenty-two is a very tight road. If you get, I mean, if it's that big a hit, then how do you stop it once it starts? And how do you have guidelines to ask who can ask to use the property? I kind of think you really need some strong policies, maybe like a town-based group, yes, because they are town-based and they're town-generated, and it might help. But to go open it to off-prem businesses, and this was a big concern we had when the hay estimates went out. You could have really had somebody from out of town come in with a super high bid, and they could be hayin' our hay and taking it out of our town. So again, how do you logistically handle this, and how do you not bother Franny anymore than you're bothering him right now? And how do you control it? Who's going to pay for the police? Bathroom facilities, water facilities. I mean, the Potato Fest is a big drain on that field. It's beaten to death by the time the Potato Fest is over. You start doing two or three events, you're going to have a dust bowl by the time, you know, the grass isn't going to come back that quick. And with Little League on the other side, and softball in the middle going on, you're not going to stop that stuff. Now you've got, it's like a three-ring circus. So I think you really got to look at this and say, "Do we really want this in our town?" Franny's working to get that ground reworked and turn it into a nice lawn in preparation for the Potato Fest. But after the Potato Fest, it's a dust bowl, and they have to put nutrients back in the ground to get the grass to come back up. So I mean, if you start overworking this park and under-managing it, then you've got an overestimated problem. That's my view. Moving on, resignations and appointments. Appointment of Joanne Wentworth to the Cable Advisory Committee, term to expire 6/30/18.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Mayor Dooley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Arman?
Abstain.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Mannen?
Abstain.
Counselor Miller?
Abstain.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is unfinished business, discussion in action, review of Senate Bill 87 regarding regional water authority.
Yeah, this was the issue that we had deferred, and we do have our Honorable Representative Vincent Candelora here tonight to kind of walk us through that bill. And I know while he's here, he might do double duty in telling us a little bit about the state budget and status as well.
Thank you for catching this.
Yeah, I'd like to second that. Thank you for catching this.
Yeah, you're welcome, and I guess that's what I'm there to do up there. I want to bring this to the council's attention. I have to say, my ten years of being up there, this bill was probably one of the scariest bills that I ever had to review. And what I've prepared for you is the first packet that's stapled together that shows you the origin of this bill, which you could see the title. It says "An Act Concerning Municipalities." What had happened was, the Regional Water Authority went before the Planning and Development Committee and testified on a bill that had nothing to do with what they wanted to achieve. And that's what's called a dummy bill. So they showed up to a public hearing process, submitted testimony, which I included in your packet, advocating for a change to their charter, because the Regional Water Authority is governed by special act by state law. When they testified on the bill, the committee then met, and they substituted language in, which you legally could do, and that became Senate Bill 87, which, if you flip that page on the stapled page, it became an act concerning the South Central Regional Water Authority. So by doing it the way they did, it was never really open to a public hearing. None of us saw it on an agenda. They testified. They were the only ones testifying. And it got out of committee and went to the Senate. When the Senate passed it, they saw that nobody was opposed to it, so it didn't realize the significance of it. It came to the House, and that's where I caught it when we were reading, when I was screening bills, and immediately alerted the other side of the aisle that this bill was going to be a problem. We were able to hold it. What I've included also is just a fact sheet on what this bill actually does, and it's, this is from the Regional Water Authority. And so it points out what they're essentially trying to do. When the Regional Water Authority was created and turned into a public authority back in the seventies, it was done actually through the work of the state representative at the time, Dorothy McCloskey. She actually wrote a book on it, which was given to me when I first took office and read it. It's an interesting book. But one of the issues is that when the authority came in, they took, you know, they already had our land, but they took over the land and were charged with conservation and with water authority, providing water to the region. What Senate Bill 87 attempts to do is allow the Regional Water Authority to get into any business that they choose, whether it be solar farms or wind farms for energy. They could do housing developments with the land holdings that they have. They could, sky's the limit. Whatever a private corporation could do, that's what they were seeking to do. That changes the whole compact, essentially. They basically become a private corporation, in my mind, that's run by a board of directors that's represented from one person from each town. And if something is going to affect North Branford, you know, we are one of the largest land holdings that they have, we could very easily get outvoted, because they're looking at the best interests of the ratepayers and not necessarily the best interests of the community that's affected. The House actually, they killed the bill. They recommitted it back to Planning and Development, which was a pretty dramatic move that they made, but they all, they recognized the issue with this bill. I put it all before you, because it's certainly going to be something, I think, that you will see again next year, that the authority would try to do. I met with the attorneys at the time, and I spoke with Larry Bingham, to find out what they're actually trying to accomplish with this legislation. And the only answer I could get is they want as much authority to do what they can do. And there was some attempt to try to narrow it a little bit, but I'm not sure that any additional authority that they have is a good idea. The latter part of the bill, if you look through it, that I highlighted, what it appears to do as well is eliminate any public hearing process for land, so the authority could sell off land by a vote of its board members. And the board member, for instance, in North Branford, would be the person that would get notice of that sale, not necessarily the community members. They said it doesn't do that, but my interpretation, I think it may do that. So I think, what I said to Larry after we had killed the bill, is that we should probably start a dialogue to see what they actually do want to accomplish, because I don't necessarily want to stand in the way of anything that they may want to do. But I think we should be very concerned with the attempt that was made to really get this through the process, and the way it was done. And I told them that. I expressed that to them, that this was a, two weeks before session ended. Had I not been in the place that I was in, this very well could have been put into law, and then we would have been on the defensive. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and give you all my side of it, because I think it is significant.
My property, a butts water company, so I am in your debt. If they put a solar farm or a wind farm, and they got revenue from that, would that affect what they pay us in taxes, or is that all theirs?
It was infrastructure, correct?
Well, it, any post, I think it's post 1980, is it 80?
1980.
Yeah, somewhere in that. Any after-acquired property, they would have to pay additional taxes on it. So I mean, that would be the upside. The downside is that we have to look at the properties that they own. I mean, one of the points I made to them in our town plan, and they did a fantastic job pulling everything together at the last minute, is looking at where their land holdings are in town and what they're zoned, because not everything is designated in a watershed.
You wouldn't ask for a map?
So it is dependent on what, how the property is zoned and what they could do. You could see additional tax revenue from it, but, you know, my guess is, certainly the way the bill was written, it would be far more intrusive than any benefit we would get from taxes.
Well, when their representative was here at our last meeting, I mean, he made it pretty clear that what they're trying to do is make up for the revenue shortfall, since people are conserving water. So they have a loss of revenue, and they want to make up their loss of revenue through this. But the problem is, they went out of their way to not consult with the town, and in this town, they own 34% of the land. And, you know, so we lose control, you know, of that situation. And then, as you said, like, every town has, is represented, but we're just one vote, and other towns, they may only have 10% or 5% of the land. It's a significant change for us.
And I think what, that is right. And I think what needs to be emphasized is, this was a private water company. We converted it to a public water company in the seventies, and in doing so, established this authority that had a very specific purpose, and they act for the benefit of the public. They are, this would, again, this would change them to a private entity that's acting for the ratepayers. Now, we've had water conservation for the last 20 years. I know what a cubic, a cubic foot of water was somewhere around 80 cents back in the late nineties. It's now up over $2, almost pushing $3. I personally don't get constituents complaining to me about their water bills, but I think the conversation needs to be had, is how much money are you really going to generate from putting up a wind farm somewhere versus continuing to do what you do, and that is, you know, provide water. So I don't really buy that argument that this is to help reduce ratepayers necessarily, because it's potentially a drop in the bucket to their overall budget. The language in here, it's very strangely written, where it's saying that only 5% of their holdings could go toward other activities unless the board votes and makes it greater. So it's really phenomenal how this is written. It's opening up to do whatever they want, and they have massive amounts of land assets. They could turn themselves into, the board could say, 95% of our activity is now going to be energy and not water. And now we have a problem in New Haven County. That's the kind of broad authority that they're, power grab that they're trying to make.
Well, thank you, Russ.
Sure.
Just a point of interest, Dan. The guy that was here the last time, he wasn't their representative. He's the town council's representative, the town North Branford's representative. We appoint him to sit on that board. He was our guy. So he's the guy that would be our only vote if it didn't come to the town. And he was pretty confused.
He was bought.
I don't know if he was bought. He was our guy, not their guy.
Right.
He appeared like he was their guy.
He seemed like he was their guy.
And then, if I can indulge you for a second. I handed you out two other documents. One, I did label, let's see, document, well, let's go to Document B. Counselor Angeloni had pointed out Permanent Project Building Committee about the roof repairs and the change orders. She had inquired a few weeks ago just what the status was with the Department of Administrative Services to find out what's going on, and they got back to me and said that we need notwithstanding language. So this language appears in our bond bill, which we have not yet voted on. But essentially, everything is going on schedule, but there is a timing mechanism for when the change orders need to be submitted in order for the roof repairs to be reimbursable. What this legislation will do is just make it clear that any of the change orders that are submitted, as long as they're submitted before January 1st, 2017, the state can accept them and reimburse us. So that legislation is the one piece of legislation still hanging out there. We're going to be going back in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be voting on that. So that should clear the high school roof repair sheet. And then, the last issue is the budget. It looks like the final net cut to the town, based on the budget that you had adopted, is about $300,000. And essentially, what has happened is, we have had a reduction in the school transportation. They zeroed out for all schools the public transportation money. They've also zeroed out the pilots. We don't get a lot of that, but like college and hospital pilot money, that was about $2,000. The Pequot grant they reduced, which is the casino money. And then, the big hit was they adopted, they changed that whole car tax mechanism, which, you know, many of us who voted against it was worried this was exactly what's going to happen. They're going to give us money and take it away, and that's what happened, is they've capped the car tax. And now what they've done is they've risen the cap to 37 mils, and they've clawed back some of that money that would have otherwise gone to the towns.
So now it's going to be capped at 29 or 37? The car tax is going to be capped where now?
It's going to be at 37 mils.
Oh, not 29?
Not 29.
Okay.
Wasn't it 32?
It was 32 for this coming year.
Right, and then, I think it's for next year, it's bumped up to 37.
And so then what got clawed back?
So some of the, there's sales tax revenue that flows to the towns to reimburse them for the loss of revenue from the car tax cap. So in that formula, some of that money, I mean, every town got hit. That money was...
If their mill rate is over that cap...
Well, and even with the, where the formula works, irregardless of the cap, money was clawed back from every community. So depending, you know, Branford took about a $500,000 hit. Madison's over a million. So it just depends on how the formula baked out. And then the last part of this is, in Document A, Section 207, as part of the budget, what they've done is created notwithstanding language to allow for any municipality to adjust their budget despite what our ordinance says, special act, or despite that we've already gone to referendum. So this would enable the council to make sort of a retroactive change to the budget despite that it's already been to referendum. The one caveat, I would say, is that it's effective on passage. To date, the governor has not yet signed this. It's going to be imminent that he signs it. But I would maybe recommend any action that you take tonight, you may want to just hold a meeting in June after the budget's signed, and just reratify that action, so that, you know, it's sort of belt and suspenders, that you have a valid mill rate and a valid act that's taken once this budget is passed into law.
So is there any possibility that the numbers could change again?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the governor's agreed to this budget, so I don't believe the numbers will change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is review of the fiscal year 2016, 2017 budget.
Yeah, this is the placeholder to begin the discussion on what, if anything, the council wants to do. The actual procedural motions come down under new business, but I guess this is the place to kick things off.
Anthony, can you, can you just clarify? My recollection, the last time we were discussing this, when was the governor's proposal that he was going to take about $600,000 in state funding from us. We were looking at taking money from the fund balance, and just in the back of my mind, I remember you saying we would end up with a fund balance of 10.2%. The resolution that's in our packet that came over the weekend says if we funded a full $316,000 shortfall from the fund balance, the fund balance would be at 10.37, I think.
Right, it was 350, it was doubling the 350. It was the initial conversation we had last meeting. So 350 we already have in the budget, an additional 350 would end up about 10.2, I think the number, you're right. If we whittle it back a little bit to the 315 number, which is the amount of our deficit going into the game, it brings us to that 10.387 would be our estimate for this coming June 30th. We're not taking as much out as we were talking previously.
All right, thanks.
Anthony, the other issue with this is that this basically is a placeholder.
Right.
And if we-
We don't need it, we don't need it.
If we get more revenue than we anticipated, than what we budgeted-
Correct.
It could be a lower number than what it is.
Most definitely, right. It's a placeholder, it's a good way to play, it's not guaranteed we're going to use the full 600 and change of fund balance designation. It's there in case we need it, in case we have some savings on our expense side, or some positives on our revenue side, we don't need the full amount. We've gone many years where we haven't touched into the 3, even the 350, we've had surplus situations not requiring, you know, use of the fund balance at all, but it's there as a means to balance the budget.
So this allows you to go forward-
Right.
-with tax bills and everything else-
Correct.
-and not having to reopen, if we chose to do that.
Right. I think, I think quite honestly, it's cleaner, because doing the suggestion that I have before you to modify the revenues and take the balance out of the fund balance number, keeps the bottom line of the budget intact. The question you put forward to the residents was 15 land, 998, I think, 327, with a mill rate of 3198. And by using my suggestion, those numbers stay intact. If you start whittling off the budget, you've now changed the bottom line of the budget. And, you know, reading the information with Mike today, it really doesn't look like that is an option that you have, given the fact that the 15% didn't come out. I'm even, I'm not even sure if the fund balance change can be made, quite honestly. If you read it, you know, verbatim, it says if it's no 15%, it's, is, you know, as is, where is.
Right, but then that's why the state put in-
We just, we have the special act that's going to be signed, hopefully.
Hopefully. But we have to have ours done by June 1st. We can't wait for-
So we'll ratify it at our June meeting.
Whatever, whatever we've gotten for tonight-
Make the changes.
We'll just have to redo after it's signed, is what Benny had, right?
We're to re-regard.
Yeah.
Next item is review of light replacement project for company number two, Firehouse.
Right, there's a packet of information for you. We went out to bid, and Joe Civitella was low bid, IB Electric was low bid, and the request in terms of meeting that, the gap, is 27380. And after awarding, obviously, if we put two items on the agenda, and that would require a transfer to meet that need, but initiating this project looks like it's a three, maybe four-year payback period in terms of instituting the upgrades and the energy efficiency.
There's a suggestion motion.
Where is that? Do you have a suggestion motion on that, Mike?
Uh, no, I don't, I'm sorry, it would just, we'd have to-
Well, there's a motion for the contingency transfer later on in the, under new business.
Later on in the- All right, that's what I could-
Right, so we approved, at an earlier meeting, we approved going forward with the bid, which they did, and so this is the result of the bid, and then later on in the agenda is to, basically, we would approve it by approving the contingency transfer.
Are we squared away with that insurance claim with the Firehouse? Yeah, with the-
Check's being cut this Friday.
Okay.
Next item is review of tax abatement program for North Branford Business, 1011 Middletown Avenue.
Yes, this is an item we discussed in March, and I said that we'd be working in-house to, with Carrie, the town planner, and Dave Ambrose, to look at it, based on this project that we know is coming with Frank Capasso and Sons and their desire to renovate an existing building on Middletown Avenue. So there, the program is something that we've put together here. There's a resolution and a, basically, application in terms of criteria that you would need to approve, but the first step would be to get, under the state statute, is to send this, set a public hearing date and get input on this program. And I would suggest that June 7th be the date that we would go after, set that public hearing date to get input. But this is obviously for your review and for your, looking for your comment as well, but at that time in March, it seemed like a great economic tool, development tool we could use to retain this company and potentially other companies down the road. It doesn't appear that this, in my mind, that this would be a tool we'd use that often, and, because obviously, the thresholds are high, and one of the criteria, or the basis where the threshold is set, that you'll see on page two, is the extent and nature of improvement must be 35%. So that certainly is something that internally we've discussed, but it's something that, you know, obviously, the council, you may have certain feelings about whether that should be 30%, or maybe it should be higher at 40%. But it's in there for your review and comment, and that can all, not think that you have to make a decision or a comment tonight, but think about it, and so, or if you want to ask Dave, who's present here tonight, we can go through what the impacts and why that, you know, we put 35 in as a reasonable expectation, a reasonable number to look at, in terms of larger-scale projects and bigger buildings and manufacturers. This is not your run-of-the-mill, everyday, small, little, 5,000-square-foot addition, things like that. We're talking about major investment in terms of real estate and holdings, so. Dave is here, Carrie is here, for any questions you may have. The other issue that we are looking for your input is, it's just a placeholder for page three, the effective date, start date of this resolution. I'm suggesting October 1 of this year, with also, that's provision six on page three. Provision seven is a sunset provision, section seven, suggesting maybe a five-year, oh, look at it after, after five years. So that's the input we're looking for tonight, and I realize this is, you know, this is something fresh that you're looking at for the first time. Pat Young has looked at it, Pat and I have talked, and he said it looked, it looked fine, there weren't any comments that he had at this point, but still recommended that we follow the process, which is you can't adopt it until you go to the public hearing process first and get input, and then after June, it would come back to the council. At that same June 7th meeting, I suggest that you also take action to refer it under section 824 to P and Z, so that we can move this along, if you're so inclined to support this.
Why wouldn't we refer it to P and Z now, if they wanted to come to the June 7th hearing and comment on it?
Oh, yeah. You could, yeah, you could do that now.
So we need to set it down for a public hearing and make the referral to P and Z?
Sure.
And that's the whole business time?
Yeah, we could do that, that would give them, that would be even better, give them more time, based on what, what they've got, their meeting schedule. They meet June-
They meet this Thursday, I think, right?
Thursday.
You say that, right?
Yeah. Well, through Carrie, we can certainly do that. It's a great idea.
I got a question on, for you, Anthony, nobody else was here. We did this for, was it Firelight?
Yes.
Okay, so we did it, and it was a five-year deal.
It was a phase-in.
And we already did this. So my question is, how did we do that one, and why can't we do that again, instead of creating this whole rehabilitation thing?
I'd be lying to you, I would defer to-
Yeah, it was a different section of the statute.
I think there was a new-
They were higher.
They were building a new-
New addition. They were adding on that side that went towards North Haven and the front office building at the time, the front office wing.
So then, my follow-up question would be, are we going through this whole exercise, and by labeling it, I mean, let's, let's let it be known that, hey, if you want to come to town and spend $5 million, or $2 million, or whatever, on a piece of property, we'd be looking at this, where now, we're just going to do it, say, you got to find some old barn and rehabilitate it. So I don't know if we should go further. I mean, I know somebody must have told me that I'm thinking about this wrong.
So dollars rather than percentage, you're saying, basically? I think, I think the Firelight-
I don't know, I'm just saying that if you, this, to me, the way, I'm not a lawyer, Joe, but the way I read this, you have to rehabilitate a property.
That's right.
The Firelight-
I'm saying, if you want to come to town and build something really big, talk to us.
Or if you're already here, if you want to make-
Or if you want to add on to your existing building.
So if we're trying to sell 1599, and we knock down the building-
Rather than rehabilitate a building.
Regardless, right, regardless.
Regardless of whether you rehabilitated it or not.
The Firelight deferral was based upon contribution, a cost contribution. This deferral, which you're going to debate on, is a percentage increase in the property assessed value. Again, the other Firelight property deferral was a cost contribution. This is solely based upon the percentage increase in assessed value.
Well, Al's question, which is a legitimate one, is, do we have the authority now to do what was done for Firelight however many years ago?
Yes.
So we needn't take any action to rejuvenate that ability?
But there are differences in the programs.
Right, but we can still do what we did.
For Firelight.
For Firelight.
I believe that it's in the third packet as well, so if you look at your packet, Dave had done a comparison of 1265B and the two-year revenue impact for 1165, or 11-
Right.
1011 Middletown Avenue, and 1265E, which is this rehabilitation plan, and I believe that the impact to the town-
Yeah, that the town would have to eat more money, but the taxpayer would save more money over a five-year period, opposed to a two-year period, based upon his contribution, which he admitted was around $1.5 million. So that would only allow him a two-year deferral, opposed to a five-year deferral under 1265D, which was Mike was just referring to.
Oh.
But to answer your question, Al, yes, you can do it right now if you wanted to, under 1265C.
Okay.
So is, is it, I think the other part of Al's question was, if I read it right, if someone came, if we had a piece of property and they wanted to build new and spend X million of dollars, is there an option available to them? Because they're not rehabilitating a property.
It says in this, it says in the statute, new construction, rehab, or improving the existing property. Expansion, improvement, or new construction.
It's just an improvement, a net improvement over the value of the property.
That's one option, that's one scenario.
Okay. One of the three scenarios.
Correct.
I take it as a successor, you see no downside to the town in approving this?
No, we're not going to lose any taxes, we're going to gain taxes going forward.
At the end of the phase-in period-
End of the five-year period.
Have a net gain.
Correct. We're not going to lose anything, we're not going to lose any money once we enable them to start construction. There won't be any increase during the construction period, or when the property is completed, and for five years after that.
Okay. All right, I'll move to set this proposal for a public hearing at the, at the meeting of June 7, did you say?
June 7.
June 7, 2016.
And are you going to add the, and P and Z?
I think that'd be a separate motion, if you want it all on, I think it should be a separate motion, 824 referral.
Sure.
Do you want to set the time for the public hearing?
7:30.
Sure.
Thanks, Russ.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arment?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next is item E, North Branford Dispatch Center.
Yes, the Public Safety Communications Committee, which is formed by the town council, has a recommendation to the town council, and the recommendation is that a unified command group consisting of the North Branford Police Chief, Fire Chief, Director of Public Works, and Emergency Management Director, under the direction of the town manager, the estab, I'll give it to you, if you want to address. They establish for the purpose of managing the operational effectiveness and efficiency of North Branford's telecommunications dispatch center. Basically, it's not the daily operation of the dispatch center, but the opportunity to be more effective and efficient, and the opportunity for the, for the people involved in emergencies, et cetera, have the opportunity to gain the information that they now do not have that opportunity. Again, it's a strong recommendation, it was a unanimous vote to recommend to the Public Safety Communications Committee. So I'm putting it forward as a motion.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arment?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next item is new business discussion in action, annual appointment of auditor.
yearly process to report to OPM, who the town's going to use for the auditing firm for the upcoming audit. Seward de Monte is in the fourth year, typically it's a three-year contract with two single year extensions, we typically change every five years. I would advocate to keep them for this year, exercise our first year of the option program, especially with the change of our staff accountant, I want to minimize the disruption as much as possible, at least for this year, we could look at it again next year, but I would move to suggest going back to Seward de Monte for this year's audit. The price is $32,900.
I'm going to move to resolve that the North Branford Town Council appoint the firm of Seward de Monte CPAs as the independent auditor, designated to conduct the annual audit of the town of North Branford for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2016. Their fee to perform this work, per their response to request for proposal number three, 2012 hyphen 13, will be $32,900. Furthermore, the treasurer, finance director is directed to notify the secretary of the Office of Policy and Management of this action.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Dudi?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Arment?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond? Oh, I'm sorry. It's, Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Next item, setting the mill rate for the 2016-17 fiscal year, authorizing the town manager to sign the rate book for a collection of taxes on July 1st, 2016, and January 1st, 2017.
Mr. Mary, if you're so inclined, I would, I would suggest you flip B1 and B, and do the revenue change first.
Okay.
So that when you're adopting it, you're adopting the final number.
We'll strike that, we'll move to revenue adjustments 2016-2017.
Just for the sake of everybody's information, there are five, four grants that we are going to receive less, per the latest state numbers, as was confirmed by Representative Candelora. Education cost sharing grant, we're going to receive $45,287, less than budgeted. Our people transportation, $142,602. Our Mohegan Pequot funds, $109. Our- Our Municipal Revenue Sharing Act, $128,555, less, totaling $316,553. And the resolution is to take that money out of the additional fund balance appropriation.
We don't have to make a motion to reduce the money the state's giving to us because they're doing it.
Yeah, but I think to make, to make the budget correct...
We need a motion to take an additional $316,553 from the fund balance.
Right, and then correspondingly reduce the revenue account so it stays in balance where it is now. If you did just the fund and balance piece, it should be over revenue.
We have to make...
It's, it's a, it's a plus and minus, basically.
Yeah, we're reducing the revenue side, but...
Reducing the revenue side and increasing on the other side, so it's gonna be a wash.
All right, well, we don't need to itemize the four sources that are being cut by the state.
Well, typically, I mean, to do budgetary cuts if the line item is referenced in any of the motions.
I feel like I'm joining a fraternity, and I'm saying, oh, can I please have another hit, sir? All right, I'm gonna move to reduce the income side of the budget. Line item 101, 3550 hyphen 491, education cost sharing in the amount of $45,287. Line item 101, 3550, 493, people transportation, the amount of $142,602. Line item 101, 3590, 441,0577, Pequot, Mohegan Funds by $109. Line item 101, 3590, 441,053, one municipal revenue sharing in the amount of $128,555. And to increase fund line, 101, 3840, 591, the fund balance in the amount of $316,553.
Second.
Discussion.
No discussion. Yeah, go ahead.
The only thing I would like to say is that we are not reducing anyone's budget on the town side or the board of ed side, because we're gonna take it all out of fund balance. But on the town side, the position that was added to the budget in Public Works, I would like to see that we not fill that position, because we did not, per se, cut it out of the budget, but I don't think that now is the time to add that position. And that we just leave the money there in case it's a hard winter, we need any money, we know that there's money there, because we did cut, cut the salt budget and other things, and then maybe overtime. So I would not like to see us fill that position.
So I'm in the discussion phase. I'm gonna agree with what Rose said, but I'm also gonna, you know, add in there that, you know, so, so we didn't cut any more out of anyone's budget tonight. We went to the bank. So that meant that we borrowed, we didn't, we didn't borrow. We went and took out of our savings account $616,000 this year to run our daily, you know, costs. So what that means is, you know, we kicked that down the road. Next year, we're $616,000 in the hole before we start. No, without what the state did. That's just what we did.
And we have no...
I'm not saying that I disagree with what we're doing here. I just want to be clear that, you know, everyone has their eye on the golden goose of the service dropping 1.7 million this year. Now, this, next year, well, we just spent $666,000 of it. So we're down to $1 million of golden goose egg. But that's my only comment on this.
And a follow-up point I would like to make also is that we're at the, we don't have any buffer for next year. If things go the way they went this year, that they just voted on up the state, that's a very serious matter, because we're not gonna have another $300,000 or $600,000 to take out of the bank potentially. So we're really at the bare minimum, I think. That could be very ugly.
Any further discussion? Yeah, I, just procedurally, I want to clarify what we're doing. I did make a motion, and Rose's comments are well-taken, but I'm not sure we need to actually act on that as if it were a motion.
Correct.
Because we approved an item in the budget, hiring, if I am correct, has been frozen without permission of the town council. So any intent to hire in January or whenever, we'd have to come back to the council anyway and be approved. So that has not, that step hasn't been taken, so I don't think there's any additional action needed, other than the revisions in the budget to balance it out with the money being taken from the fund balance. Does anybody disagree with that?
Nope.
I totally agree with it, and would like to reiterate on the hiring freeze that is in place. And everybody that does want to hire someone needs to come back before the council, before anyone's hired, whether it's the police, whether, you know, it's anybody and everybody.
Well, I think that was a motion, and I think it should be redone. I think that was a motion by a previous council.
That was like two councils ago.
Yeah, and I don't think those continue on council to council.
So then, you know, maybe we need to address that. I, I don't, I, I'm, and I'm not sure on that, Mike, but I think unless, unless a future council changes it, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it ends.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anything adopted goes away just because the council changes.
Yeah.
It's probably worth running that by Pat Young next week.
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
And if necessary, yeah, let's re-adopt it, but I, I think it's, we've acted for the last two, at least two years, that that is the, the policy of the town council and of the town.
You would think that a standing order would be withstanding each council until they rescind or change that motion.
Worth looking at, too.
Yeah, that was a question that I had, so. I mean, if somebody does something wrong, it doesn't mean I have to continue it. But if somebody did something right, do we have to continue? Next item is setting... Okay, roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
No.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, and we're back to the first one. Setting the mill rate for 2016-2017 fiscal year and authorizing the town manager to sign the rate book for collections of taxes on July 1, 2016, and January 1, 2017. All right, I'll move that the council resolve to set the mill rate for the 2016-2017 fiscal year at 31.98 mills and further authorize Michael T. Paul, as town manager, to sign the rate book for the collection of taxes on July 1, 2016, and January 1, 2017.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Fiscal report, financial report for April 30, 2016.
The report you have in front of you comparing April 2016 to April 2015 remains unremarkable. Fortunately, the tax collections, again, slightly above 99.5% compared to 99.4% for the prior year. Overall revenue, 90.2% compared to 89.8%. Under the expenditure side, it's slightly higher, but the same departments that have been over-expended all along remain, there's no, no new culprits going over-expended. A couple of, we're gonna make transfers at the end of the year. I've also attached for you the trial balance of the self-insurance fund for your update. As of the end of April, it's about $578,000 in that, in that fund. Again, looking forward to hopefully a successful year with that. And if there's any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Next is contingency form, transfer for light replacement project for company number two.
This is basically the motion that seals up the proposal that was presented to the council several months ago. As the manager had mentioned, the request was that they were gonna receive town funds to go out to bid. Bid was indeed done. The results were given to you in the prior item on the agenda. So this is the net amount after the Water Electric rebate, $27,380.
Anybody want to make the motion? I'll move to make a contingency transfer in the amount of $27,380 for company two lighting upgrade.
Second.
Before we vote on this, could, Anthony, could you explain, you know, how, how does this work again? Because the town doesn't own the building, right?
The town pays the electric bill.
The town pays the electric bill.
The town pays electric bill, pays the oil bill, and...
So you're basically fronting the money and getting it paid back?
We're gonna, we're gonna save, yes. As, as the manager mentioned, a three-to-four-year payback. It's, it's a very good project in the eyes of the utility company. They have auditors that review these projects. And we had talked about, as we're doing the capital project, budget for next year, to tie a bunch of them together, both in the UI end of the world as far as Water Electric as well. UI allows you to do on-bill financing. Where Water Electric, you have the money upfront. That's the difference in, in the, in the logic. But there are several projects we're looking at upgrading to LEDs town-wide to save us some money.
Thank you.
Okay, appropriation transfers? Sorry about that.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
Yes.
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Appropriation transfers? Anthony, I got a question. Tasers?
Yes.
These were bought several months ago, and we're just seeing the transfer now?
Yes. What had happened is when the police were in for their annual budget review, there was talk about replacing the tasers. And the, the direction they were given at that time was, based on their comments, they were gonna have savings in their overtime budget, was to transfer the money and buy the money with the current year overtime savings. And the disconnect was the department up there thought the transfer was being handled down here. And typically, the department initiates the transfer, not, not the finance department. So we were waiting for the transfer to come down, and then, you know, pressuring them to say, you know, we purchased the items, where's the transfer to catch up with it? And that's where the transfer came down, and that was the rationale, that there was an assumption up there that the transfer was being initiated.
Is there any documentation that they were unsafe and beyond repair? Or not? Or it's just...
I don't profess to be a taser, taser expert.
Just their word of mouth.
It was just the, the information that was relayed at the...
Somebody that has been totally truthful.
Did, did that go out to bid?
I think it was a state, it was a state, it was a sole source. Michelle had looked into that, because the dollar amount obviously exceeds the threshold. And taser basically is a sole source. There's one taser supposedly out there. That's what she was told. She went to her regional purchasing consortiums and said the taser is taser. There's no brand X taser you can use. I don't profess to be a taser expert, but that was the explanation that was given.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve the... Guys, it's already been done. All right, I move that we approve the appropriation transfer recommended by the town manager for the purchase of technical supplies, being tasers that are reported to be unsafe and beyond repair in the amount of $30,500.
I'll second that.
And in the future, Anthony, I think they're supposed to be signed by the chairman on the board.
I don't know the, please commission policy. I'll ask.
Next item is tax... Okay, hold on. Just get ahead of it.
Do I take those discussion points?
Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Armond?
I have to say, I'm kinda confused as to how this went down.
It didn't go down properly.
But I guess we have, okay, yes, it's already been done, but...
Councilor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
I agree with my friend Dan Armond. I don't like the way this was done. No.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.[1658.26]